Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,222nd regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plaits and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and the professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. DeNaro.
Here.
Mr. Bongiello.
I'm here.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Drows.
Here.
Mr. Ventura. He's here. Karen Magno is here. Chairman Walsh.
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese, which are both from our Planning Department. And for the folks in our audience that haven't been to one of our meetings before, the format of the meeting is we'll start by reading off each of the items on our agenda. Our planning staff will then give us background information on these items. We'll then ask that the petitioner come forward and speak to their petition. We'll ask questions of them, and then if anyone else in the audience is wishing to speak for or against the petition, there'll be an opportunity for them to come forward before we make our decision. So with that, we're going to start right with the public hearing section of our agenda, which is item number one.
Petition 2024-10-02-16 submitted by Livonia Gas Mart requesting waiver use, approval of all plans required by sections 3.11 and 13.13 of the Livonia zoning ordinance is amended in connection with a proposal to redevelop and expand the existing gas station, including removing the service bays, expanding the building to provide additional retail space and restaurant, and relocate and increase the number of fuel pumps and parking lot at 31301 Plymouth Road located on the southwest-east corner of Plymouth and Merriman Roads in the northwest quarter of section 35.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi.
Good evening. So, as mentioned, this is to redevelop the existing gas station, including removing the service bays, expanding the building to provide additional retail space and a proposed restaurant. This would also relocate the fuel pumps and rearrange the parking. The current zoning for the site is C2, general business. North across Plymouth Road is zoned C2. East of the petition site is Plymouth Square Shopping Center, zoned C2. South is also zoned C2. And west, at the southwest corner of Plymouth and Merriman, is the Citizen Bank, zoned C1. And just south of that property is an N1 neighborhood. Currently, the site operates a gas station and auto repair business with three service bays. The subject site measures 175 feet by 175 feet for a total area of 30,625 square feet. The existing one-story building is approximately 2,055 square feet in size, and there are two groups of gas pumps, four pumps fronting Plymouth Road and two on Merriman. Four driveways provide ingress and egress to the site, two on Plymouth Road and two on Merriman. Some background on the site. In 2021, the site was approved to construct an addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the existing mobile gas station, but no construction was done afterwards. We did receive new plans from the petitioner since the last time we met. The total addition for the gas station would be 4,664 square feet in size, and they would have two separate uses. The first addition is an L-shaped in size, or in shape, and adding 1,152 square feet, 12 feet to the south and 11 feet to the east. This would be used for additional retail area for the gas station. The second addition portion would add 27 feet to the east for a total of 1,500 square feet, and it's noted as a proposed use for a takeout restaurant. No further information is provided for that proposal, though. The required setbacks for a gas station is 60 feet. On Merriman Road, the setback is 64 feet. On Plymouth Road, the setback is 70 feet. And the zoning ordinance allows for zero setbacks with wind buddy and commercial spaces, and there is an eight-foot setback from the southern property and 22 from the eastern property. Access to the site is, this is one of the changes that was on the updated site plan, the northern curb cut closer to the corner along Merriman Road has been removed, and in its place, there is an additional parking spot. The gas pumps would be, six existing pumps would be replaced by four pumps that could accommodate eight vehicles. The pumps would be located along Plymouth Road entrances. The pumps are covered by a canopy with a height of 17 feet and a bottom clearance of 14 feet. For parking, the convenience stores require one space for 150 square feet of area. There are seven, which would be 17 spaces. And then there's not enough information for the proposed restaurant to get a accurate number of what we would require in the zoning ordinance. So, but based off of the ITE Parking Generation Manual, we can estimate that 12 spaces would be required for a restaurant of this size. This would be a total of 29 parking spaces. The site plan shows 15 nine-foot wide spaces and one parallel space in front of the removed drive that I mentioned, plus the eight spots at the pumps. A dumpster enclosure, this is another change from the last time we met, a dumpster enclosure was constructed, or is constructed, that has been relocated to the southwest between the building and the two parking spaces. The walls would be six feet high and made of poured concrete and brick pattern and a sloping four-inch stone cap. The floor plan shows the gas station convenience store removing the service bays and adding a large display sales area, walking coolers, restrooms, customer service counter, and office and back rooms. As I mentioned, no details are provided for the restaurant area, and there will be no access between the two uses. Elevations show the addition would be constructed out of brick with accent columns constructed out of split face block, a decorative crown molding surrounding the top edge of the building. Separate entrances are shown for each use, the new storefront windows, with new storefront windows on either side of the convenience store entrance. No renderings have been received for the elevations. And then, for landscaping, the zoning ordinance requires three trees along Plymouth and Merriman Road, one ornamental tree and 23 shrubs along each right-of-way. Landscape plan shows two existing trees and three ornamental trees on Plymouth Road and none on Merriman, and then a total of 63 shrubs distributed around the right-of-way. No signed package has been submitted with this petition. And with that, I also have correspondence.
Sure. If you would like to read that out, please.
In accordance, this is from the Engineering Department. In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver of use at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address 31301 Plymouth Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once permitting has been completed. The existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main and stormwater. The submitted drawings does not include any proposed utility information, but we do not believe there will be any adverse impacts to the existing systems with the proposed improvements. Although the drawings do not indicate any utility alterations, it should be noted that any proposed development may be required to provide stormwater improvements and detention per the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Should the project move forward, the owner will need to submit plans to the Engineering Department for calculation of water and sewer fees associated with the building expansion and new restaurant facilities. Any disturbances with the Middle Belt or Plymouth Road right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service or MDOT, including drive approach and sidewalk removals and placements. This is signed Dave Lear, Assistant City Attorney, or Engineer. From the Livonia Fire Department, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal. A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal.
From the Police Traffic Bureau, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. The single barrier-free space provided in the proposal located on the south side of the business has the excess aisle on the driver's side of the parking spot. Per the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, when a barrier-free space is located in angled parking, the excess aisle must be in the passenger side. Furthermore, two accessible parking spaces should be provided for the number of parking spaces in the proposal per the ADA. Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Accounting Department, I've reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general water or sewer, I have no objections to the proposal. Please contact me if you have further questions. Signed, Connie Kupala, Chief Accountant.
And finally, from the City Treasurer's Office, the property still owes $10,526.59 in back property taxes. This is signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bongiello.
Thank you. Jacob, has there been arrangements made on these back taxes that you know of?
No, but they were just, we were originally told that they didn't have anything that came back. When was that?
Friday, Thursday.
Yeah. Late last week that they have back taxes. So we've not had a chance to...
As of today, we understand it's still due.
Still, yeah.
Okay. Then I do have a question with the parking. So, they're going to have to go before ZBA for the parking? They're deficient, right?
They are deficient, yes.
And then with the ITE calcs, that just does like an average of a restaurant that size that...
They take it, they go by settings, so there's an urban, suburban, rural, but they've looked at many studies to get an average of what the most likely outcome or required parking would be.
Okay. And they're still showing, well, it looks like they've, they're changing to 10-foot spaces, but they're still a little short.
Yes, correct. And they, their plans do show nine-foot spaces, but our ordinance requires 10-foot.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bongiello. Any other questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Jacob, I want to follow up on Mr. Bongiello's question. So, if they go to 10-foot spaces, will they lose spaces?
I would imagine, but I've not done the calculations to figure out exactly how many they would lose.
Okay. So they'd be even more deficient if they go to 10-foot spaces. I noticed when I was on the site today that there are two light poles side by side in the median on the Merriman roadside between the two entrances. Is that going to remain?
I'm not aware...
I see they're on the draw.
Yeah. I believe they would remain, but unless otherwise noted by the petitioner.
So they have nothing to do with this petition? It's just kind of a point of interest for me?
Yeah. I'm not aware of what they would be.
Okay. Do we have any color rendering?
No, we did not receive any color renderings.
So do we, is this a demolish and rebuild, or is this a modification, or...
I believe it's an addition.
Sorry about the tape. It's just not, it's taking...
All right. Just hold it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for planning staff? If not, petitioner is in our audience, feel free to come to our podium. Start with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Alex Reishuni. I'm with MA Design. I'm representing, I'm representing the owner, Dr. Fedi Nasradine, and I guess the Livonia Gas Mart. I'm not sure what this company, company name is, but yeah, I'll be representing him as the designer. And to start, so as you know, we're proposing to keep the existing building. The building is almost 2,000 square feet. I had 1,966, I think I, I heard a little bit over 2,000 from, I think Jacob, right? But anyways, we are, we're going to be adding addition onto the retail area of the store and, and then separate, a separate proposal. Well, I mean, it's all together, of course, but then there's the carryout restaurant that the owner likes to, to have in all his locations. The owner right now, you know, presently probably has like 20 locations. Not all of them are designed exactly the same as this, but the majority of them, and he wants to keep them looking the same way. So he, he has the retail, you know, area that consists about 3,000 square feet in order for him to, to have a certain amount of products in there and a certain, you know, certain design in order for him to succeed in this gas station business. And that's why he does it this way. He's learned his lesson, you know, for the last 10 years, and this is what he kind of told me. And then he attached the, the carryout restaurant, and sometimes he runs them, but most of the time, he has a partner that runs it with him. So that's why he's not sure what he wants to put in there yet. But in most locations that I've seen, there, he has a place called Eureka Eatery. What that, what that, what kind of foods and stuff like that? I never really visited it, but I did see a lot of pictures in his office about different locations, and he's, you know, that he started to, to develop in this way. He's, we got actually another couple of gas stations like this, one in Garden City and one in, I think it was Canton. That, that, yeah. Well, one in Garden City on Merriman and Ford Road is being proposed, and we'll be going to a meeting on that. And the one in Canton is on 275 and, anyways, right next to 275 on Michigan Avenue. So those are the ones I'm working on, but there's more to come. So yeah, and, and this one, he wants to develop right now. This is actually the first, well, not the first one, but the one, first one for me that I'm involved in. So we're hoping that we can move forward on that. And as, as far as some of the questions that arose, I mean, as far as the gas pumps, maybe we could talk about that first. You know, he likes to change the gas pumps to a dive-in gas pump orientation. It helps in people, just the circulation of how people come in and out. I'm the one that proposed to the owner to close that approach. He hates closing any approach. He always feels like, you know, if a customer misses one approach, he's going to find that next one. I mean, he just wants people to come into his site, especially in gas station businesses. But I told him, you know, sometimes the one next to the traffic lights, you know, creates some kind of traffic, you know, it creates accidents and things like that. So let's propose at least closing one, which is the one on Merriman on the northern, northern side. It was, it was proposed by Jacob at one point that somebody mentioned that they want, they were thinking if we can close also another one, and he wasn't really happy about that one. He wants to comply with the city and really move forward with this because you could see that the, you know, the building doesn't look so, so great, and the repair shop is closed right now. I'm not sure what his predicament is on that, but he really wants to turn it into some of the, the locations that he's, he has around. So as far as the, the parking spaces, so usually carryout restaurant, carryout, you know, people that go in and out, actually, I did visit one, one of his locations, the one on, it's also in Garden City. It's on Ford and Henry Rough. And I could see that everybody, you know, it's not, it's not like busy to a point where people are coming in, parking. When people come in, they come in for their cigarettes, filling gas, bread, whatever, you know, a drink. At the same time, if they wanted to carry out something, usually they call in before, and they come and pick up, they pick up their food now, or they DoorDash it. So it's limited amount of traffic that usually parks at these restaurants anymore, even in, you know, downtown districts and things like that. So if you recalculate it in a sense, or we recalculate it at another time when we do design the restaurant, what I've seen in his restaurant is that 70% was used for his kitchen and, and service area and all that, wash area, prep area. And like I said, it was just, you walk in, and he has a couple of tables for people can just, or in a bench, I've seen, that people can just sit and wait for, for, for an order. But other than that, the place was empty. I mean, people were just picking up. I just felt like people were just picking up things. I don't know what else I can add, but we do, we do want to comply. We do want to move forward. We're hoping that you'll be on our side on this. As far as those light posts, that, those are on private property, and those are public light posts, so I'm not sure if we can do anything about, about that. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I appreciate you giving us the background on this petition. What I'll do is go to my fellow commissioners and see if there's some questions for you about the, the plan. Is there any questions for our petition?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm really, I'm really glad to see that this site is getting a revamp because it is much needed. I do have like concerns about the parking. The ADA parking was, was specifically called out and not having enough parking spaces. So is there an opportunity to go back and relook at the design to add 10-foot parking spaces because currently they're at nine feet and, and figure out how to get the rest of those parking spots in and get the ADA parking in there?
So one of my first sketches is that I proposed parking on an angle, a one-way parking coming in and out on an angle. It's not here. I can't show it to you. But the first reaction from Mark, actually, that emailed me back, was that, you know, maybe it's better to take out the parking, and he actually said in his email, if I remember correctly, I got to go back to that email, I thought he said that you have enough parking, you could do away from that so the circulation is better. But I knew, but even when I had those angled parking and I, around the site from, coming in from Plymouth, I had angled parking, and then I had the dumpster toward the corner of, you know, of where the restaurant was. Then we, then we moved it with some comments from, from Mark and maybe even Jacob at one point, but, and then they were going to circulate in a, in, from the, from the, what's that, north, the northeast approach, they would, they would go in and they would circle around where they have one-way parking, also at the front of the building, because I told them it would be nice for people just to park closer to the building, you know, so they can get in and out quicker if they wanted to just pick up something instead of just filling gas and waiting at the pump, you know, and getting their stuff. And then they would just back out and circulate and go back off Merriman. And that would be, that would turn to be a nice little circulation pattern, and we would, we would be able to add more parking, but I thought maybe he didn't, maybe, he wasn't in favor of that idea, so I just wanted to do what, what was recommended, you know, to me. Other than that, there was another thing that was brought up. This, this survey that, that was brought to me was brought to me by the owner of how we put this architectural site plan together. And what I noticed when Jacob sent me another email saying, you know, you know, you probably have more, more frontage on Merriman. And it turned out that the, the gas company that provided him with that survey only provided him with the, with the amount that is set over here, 140 feet. He actually has 173, 0.17, I think it was. He does have that green area on the southern part that is his, that he didn't think it was his. I said, why don't you look at the legal description and give it to me so I could verify that? But we didn't have enough time to talk about what was brought up by Jacob. And then he, you know, he was reluctant, but he said, if I have to, I'll, I'll develop it and we'll put parking back there. But how many people are really going to park back there and walk all the way to the front of that gas station? That's what his comment is. But he said, if that's what they, if that's what's recommended, then we, we'll do it.
Okay. Ms. DeNaro, you still have the floor. Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions, Mr. Drows?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So very tight site as we kind of look at it, and can understand some of the challenges of fitting this into the site, but, you know, one of the recommendations that was made at the study session was about closing both driveways. And I guess a question to circulation, how are the gas trucks going to get into the site? What's your plan for that? How are they going to maneuver? And how does that affect that driveway on Plymouth Road?
So as you can see, this is an existing site, so there's gas trucks that are always coming in already, and they were, they, and it was a lot more complicated because they had to go through two pumps that were on the Merriman side and another two pumps with longer islands that were on the Plymouth side. So now, you know, it's going to be a lot easier for them to come in from Merriman, and, you know, they usually just take up a section of that space trying to give the rest of the traffic an area to come in and out, but they kind of block the area for about 20 minutes or so in order for them to pump that, that, that gas back into the tanks and leave. So they do block, but they find their, their way to, to get through with the traffic working around them.
So would they, you said come in off of Merriman, and then would they exit via the Easterly Drive back to Plymouth, or...
Yeah. They would be able to come from, and exit from Plymouth, yes.
Okay. So that, that driveway close to the intersection is not needed for the truck circulation?
The, the what?
The driveway that's currently, call it 15 feet off the sidewalk on Plymouth Road is not needed for the truck?
The approach that we're proposing to, to close?
No, the one on Plymouth Road.
Oh, the one on Plymouth Road.
Jacob's showing with his pointer right now.
The one that's only 15 feet?
Yeah.
So the one on the, on the northeast corner?
Yes. Northwest corner.
Oh, the northwest corner, the one closer to the thing. I mean, he can always circle, circle around, all the way around and come back this way. I mean, he can do it, if you're asking that question.
Just curious, yeah. Didn't know how that's, okay.
Yeah. It would have been easier for him probably. What he used to do is come in from the southern approach from Merriman and come out from the northern approach. Maybe that's what he did before, but I don't, I'm not sure. I'm just assuming what's happening from sites that I go visit sometimes.
Another question, the new canopy that's proposed, it was not included in our elevations. Do you have details on what that will look like?
I thought I had that, and let me just double check. Maybe not. You know, I don't, I don't have it, but I can, I mean, if you're asking for that, we can propose that, of course, and we're going to probably have to turn it in when we get permits, but it's your common canopy, you know? We're going to, we're going to dress it up with the, with the columns, and the columns will be brick, the red brick as the building. And yeah, on one of my projects, I did, it was up in Pontiac, I did provide them with a canopy and pumps. I thought I did the same thing with this project, but I don't think it was asked for. So it was asked for toward the end of our emails back and forth, but it wasn't asked before. And on my previous projects in Livonia, you know, I probably didn't do a gas station for a while, but it was never asked. When it's never asked, I never, I give it right away, but I will be submitting them for, for permitting, you know? But it's your regular gas station. Which name brand he's going to have, Citgo, Sunoco, Marathon, I'm not sure which one he's going to have. And usually, it's the, it's the gas companies that provide the image of it anyways. I'm not supposed to be drawing something that I don't know what to draw, and most architects are not going to draw something that usually is provided by the, by the gas companies, the image of it. But as far as the height, the, it's, it's usually a standard height. It's 13, it's 14 feet to the bottom of the canopy, and the canopy itself is three-foot high, and it's all made of aluminum. But it's your typical canopy, flat, a roof made out of steel beams and covered with aluminum.
Okay. Okay, and I, we did mention that at the work session, or the study session, that I think that's obviously a very prominent thing. This is a, a major intersection in the city. So I think, uh, I would personally like to see that detailed. Um, as you've come today with the renderings, it's helpful for us to understand the colors and materials. And then, uh, I guess the last point is, um, the, um, the lighting for the site. Typically, we, we like to see photometrics. So obviously, gas stations are fairly well lit, um, but just curious to know what your plans are.
Yeah, the only li- lighting that we're proposing is wall pack lighting, uh, around the building. And I have them, uh, labeled on the site plan, uh, showing nine lights, uh, three in the front, uh, two in the back, um, uh, two on the west side and two on the east side. Um, so the wall pack lighting, I don't have a detail with me here, but I can provide that also.
And under the canopy too?
Oh, and the canopy, it's gonna be LED, they're all LED lighting, uh, but under the canopy also. There, I don't know how many exactly, but we're got, it's gotta be designed.
Okay, no further. Thank you, Mr. Dros.
Um, and they're flush with the, with the ceiling on the canopy. They're not, uh, those, uh, protruding, uh, lights anymore like the old style. Yeah, they're flush in, within the canopy.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and, and maybe this is gonna be a redundant question. If it is, I won't ask it. But have we gone through the exterior materials? Do we know what's there?
Uh, we do not. This is the first time we've seen the rendering.
Right. Uh, then could you walk us through what's going on on the outside of the building? And I guess my first question is, uh, what percentage of the existing building is gonna be replaced? I mean, is the whole thing gonna be reskinned or is there some of the existing building that's gonna remain or what's the story?
Sir, what we'll ask you to do, if you could hold the rendering up and then speak into the microphone, that way our TV audience can hear you as well as you describe this. Thank you.
So, yeah, we're gonna, um, so let's say the, the portion of the building is, um, in this, in this section right here, this is the existing building. We're gonna, yeah, uh, uh, skin, like you said, uh, the, all, the whole building down to the eight-inch block. We're gonna remove the whole roof and, um, and rebuild, uh, the brick on the existing building. And if we have to build more block, and then, um, and then, and then there's gonna be, uh, a whole new building that's gonna be built for the addition for, from, from here to here, um, all the way around. Um, so the, so the building will consist of, uh, a split face block, uh, at the, at the, where it's, where it's white. And, um, and a red brick, uh, and this is, this is, this is what he has on all his locations.
So the entire exterior of the building is brick or block?
It's, uh, it's eight-inch, it's eight-inch block, the, the main structure. Then there's the four-inch veneer, uh, I don't wanna call it veneer, it's a four-inch brick. And, um, where the, where the, 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 the split face block is, it's, it's only an eight-inch split face block. There's no block and brick. So you have, uh, one structure where the, where the, where the split face is and like two, two, uh, two structures when you, when you built it from eight-inch block to four-inch brick.
Okay, um, thank you. And I know, uh, Mr. Uaz commented on the landscaping in our write-up and it, and it's somewhat deficient on the, uh, on the Merriman Road frontage. Is there a reason that you're not conforming?
Uh, we're deficient on what exactly? Sorry. That deficient?
Landscaping.
Oh, landscaping. Okay, so, um, yeah, I was hoping that, you know, those, those questions were brought up in a, in one report so we could answer all of them at one, one time. I don't think I received anything like that. I always received like an email of jotted items. And if, if I'm wrong, Jacob, uh, I apologize, but I thought, I, I don't see, I didn't see no report like, you know, like, you know, some cities give. But yeah, we could provide, uh, every, you know, whatever it says, twenty feet, twenty-five feet, forty feet, um, of, uh, deciduous, uh, maple trees or honey locusts, whatever trees that, um, uh, but we will design certain amount of trees for that, uh, for Merriman. That's required.
Okay, and I guess my last question, uh, has to do with, uh, the number of employees on it at any given time. How many employees will be working there?
Yeah, usually on, uh, on, on most hours and most shifts, there's only one, one cashier. But the second one will, a second person will come in just to fill in the, fill the coolers and things like that. So at the most, there's only two. At, this is for the gas station part. Now, as far as the restaurant, the future restaurant, that needs to be designed and get permits at a later time, we want it approved within the structure right now, of course, um, uh, for planning. But, um, in, in the future, uh, restaurants like this probably need at least three people at one point to, you know, prep and service and, and cook, you know?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned you're already deficient in parking considerably and, and you're gonna have five parking places consumed by employees of the, of the parking that you're providing. I guess, um, if the ownership owns the land to the south and he's, he's amenable to paving part of that for additional parking, I'd like to see some employee parking put there so that the parking that's on the site adjacent to the gas pumps and the store and the restaurant are there for the customers.
I think it's a good idea. No problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Uh, any other questions for our petitioners representative?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
I got a couple, a couple of questions and, uh, and certainly some concerns as well. Um, the grass to the east of the building, what's the, what's the plan, uh, the pavement rather, east of the building? Why, why would you leave that pavement there?
I mean, it's an existing, uh, so we didn't need to expand the building more than is needed. And, um, and you can't really fit, uh, uh, you know, a parking space or circulate any parking, uh, around there or anything like that. So, uh, it is, uh, like a dead space.
So you plan on leaving that asphalt and no grass there?
Uh, we could, yeah, uh, if you recommend grass, we will. We, we left the asphalt, uh, he, he just wants less maintenance all the time. But, um, and I did have, uh, uh, like I, I proposed the grass area at one point as far as my design. But he said, why don't you leave it as asphalt? I don't wanna maintain these grass areas and cut them all the time and, you know, it grows. But, um, if you, if you recommend that, that's, that's, you know.
Well, how, how long is this, is this owner own the station?
Uh, I don't know. I, that one, I, I, I'm not sure. I never asked him that question.
It's, it's clearly rundown and there, there's, there's little effort to make it something nice. And, you know, some of my comments now are gonna be, you know, tonight, this presentation is ill-prepared as far as I'm concerned and, and I can't vote for anything here tonight with all the, with all the questions that are, that are out there. I mean, we, we got a, we got a, the color rendering here, uh, the, the pavement, the parking is certainly an issue. There's no doubt about it. I agree with, with, with the others. Um, and then we've got the taxes as well. So we got a multitude of problems here that are, that are an issue. And then even in your own comments, sir, you say that your, your, your owner wants to comply with the city. Well, I'm not seeing that in anything you're showing us tonight. So, uh, I, I've got, I've got trouble with this, with this case. So I'll leave my comments there.
I mean, the only, the only thing I can answer on the, on your comment like that is that, yeah, no, he wants to comply.
I'm not, I'm not, but we're, I'm not seeing that.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand why.
Nine-foot spots. I'm coming in with less spots than available. I'm coming in with not hearing us originally to move that building back. Uh, not hearing anything about the reducing the driveways. That's not trying to comply with the things we asked for or requested. So I'm not hearing that.
Let's not debate back and forth, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna.
Thanks. I just don't agree with that. I'm sorry.
I understand.
I, I, you know, I'm.
Sir, sir, let's not debate back and forth. He's entitled to his opinion. Uh, is there any other questions for our petitioners representative? I see no other questions from any of the commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Uh, sir, you get the last word, uh, as the petitioner. So feel free to, uh, say anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision.
Yeah. The only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, when I propose things to the city, I propose it, I, the first thing I do is I, I email stuff and, and, uh, submit things to the planning department. And then I get their feedback. And then I, and I do, if not a hundred percent, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the, the things I recommend, okay? And if I get things, you know, that, that also pops up, you know, very close to the planning commission meeting and I don't have heads up, then I'm not able to answer that in the, in a meaningful, uh, amount of time. But the thing is, in, but for what I could say is that the gas station, the way it is right now, is in a horrible design. It was like an old design that is a horrible design. And what I proposed with the rendering that I sent for, that shows most of the design that the owner likes to have in, in, in all his locations, and I, I, I could, uh, uh, send the addresses so you guys could go visit those locations in other, in other cities. Um, uh, you could see that, uh, that, that they don't, they don't have half of the parking that, uh, that I proposed. That's number one. And you can go look at the, the circulation in those, uh, in those locations, one being on Ford Road and Henry Rough. I know, I think it's easy for you to, 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 to find that one. And, um, um, I've got a headache today. Um, the other thing is, um, as far as, uh, proposing, uh, you know, trying to work with the city in order to propose an, an approach, uh, closing an approach, I think that's another insight for me trying to work, uh, and, um, and, and trying to propose something that is better for the city. As far as the rest of the design, um, the park, the parking circulation, the dive-in pumps, in order to, uh, get in and out of the building, um, you know, you want me to, uh, move the building all the way to the corner just to cover some asphalt? I mean, I don't understand why I would have to build a bigger building that I can't even fill. I mean, people would, uh, most cities would say, no, I want less square footage and, and, and not a bulky building. Now, for me, not, not to, I have to utilize the existing building. So that's where I, that's my starting point. I'm not able to go, you know, push the whole building for, uh, you know, to the, to the left and lose two thousand square feet and then build a whole new building. That's not what he wanted me to propose. And that's not what he wants to do. And I think he'll just, uh, you know, slam the project if he had to do that. So at the same time, it has to be feasible for him economically. And, uh, I think what we did is way better than what it is right now, um, with no question, you know, a doubt. That's all I can say. I hope you guys could reconsider. I hope we can get approval. We can go through, uh, the planning department and get things done and approved administratively so we don't waste time. Because, uh, I just don't want owners to change their mind if we have to wait months.
Sure.
To come back and forth to these meetings.
Well, you understand.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your comments and, uh, now we'll see what happens. Uh, we go back to the, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
Okay.
Welcome back, Mr. Ventura.
Yeah, thanks. I'll offer an approving resolution. That the request to redevelop and expand the existing gas station, including removing the service base, expanding the building to provide additional retail space, a new restaurant, as well as relocating and increasing the number of fuel pumps at thirty-one, three oh one Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified a sheet SP one dated September first, twenty twenty-four, as revised, prepared by M Designers Group Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. And I'm gonna add to this provision, uh, Jacob. However, uh, petitioner shall add, uh, sufficient parking spaces, a minimum of five parking spaces to the site, to the south of the building to accommodate employee parking, et cetera. And, and I don't leave the number of additional places added to the discretion of the planning department. Uh, number two.
Probably would be part of number two is what you're actually discussing.
I don't care where he puts it.
That's fine, that's fine.
Somewhere in the, somewhere in the motion area, yeah.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah, okay. All parking spaces except the required barrier-free parking shall be double striped and ten feet wide by twenty feet in length as required. And the number and location of the barrier-free parking spaces shall be provided at the direction of the inspection department. Number three, exterior building elevation. Plan identified a sheet A two dated September first, twenty twenty-four as revised, prepared by M Designers Group Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening and shall be of a compatible character, material, and color to the other exterior materials on the building. Number five, any light fixtures shall not exceed the height of twenty feet from grade at the base of the light and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines or on adjacent roadways. Number six, no outside storage placement or display of merchandise shall be permitted. Number seven, pursuant to section six dot two six, parentheses, eleven, free air shall be provided and dispensed at the point of service without having to enter the station or perform any extra action to obtain the air without charge. Number eight, vacuum equipment on the outdoor or the outdoor placement or storage of propane cylinder storage units is not allowed. Number nine, the sale of ice shall be restricted to the inside of the building. Number ten, only conforming signs are approved as a part of this petition and any additional signs shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number eleven, no part of the pump, island, canopy, fascia, except for signage, shall be illuminated and no LED light band or exposed neon is allowed in any part of the building, including around the windows or on the overhead canopies. Number twelve, unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Thirteen, that this approval is subject to the petitioner being granted a variance from the zoning board of appeals for any deficient parking and any conditions related thereto. Uh, number fourteen, the specific plans referenced in this approval shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time that the building permits are applied for. I'm gonna amend number fourteen, that included on those plans shall be an augmented, um, or if not, shall be a landscape plan that conforms in all respects with the requirement of the city. Number fifteen, pursuant to the section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia Vision twenty-one zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of approval by the city council. Unless the building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. And I'm gonna add a number sixteen to this petition, to this, um, motion that all delinquent property taxes shall be paid prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Okay, is there support?
I'll support with a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Bongera.
That portion of existing pavement, either it's grass or new asphalt.
Out to the east of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. The maker's okay with that?
Agreed.
Okay. And is there any other comments?
Can, can we also add something about the landscaping deficiencies that all of those get addressed as well?
I believe Mr. Ventura did, uh, note that. Yeah, he, he kind of added as a amendment to the landscaping on fourteen, yeah. They work with the, uh, planning department to, uh.
To, to assure compliance.
Okay, very good. All right, any other comments, Mr. Dros?
Another proposed, uh, amendment, if they do indeed have the ability to do parking on the south side of the building, um, to also explore somehow moving the dumpster out of the, kind of the Merriman Road frontage. You know, it's kind of, we're kind of designing the site as we go here, but.
I'd, I'd agree with that.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to leave it in.
Okay, the maker and supporter's okay with that?
I am, yes.
Very good. Any other comments? I'll throw one out there. Uh, we did discuss at the study meeting about closing entrances closest to the intersection. They've closed one. Is there any interest from the maker in requiring that the other entrance off of Plymouth Road that's closest to the intersection also be, uh, closed and replaced with landscaping? Or would you prefer to keep it that way?
So, Mr. Will Shaw, you're.
This was something that was discussed at study. We didn't get a chance to talk to you about it.
I'm going to defer to my colleagues on that. I mean, if that's the consensus here, that that's something that.
Oh, this is your motion, Mr. Ventura. It's got your name all over it.
Unfortunately, I was not present, so you're talking about both.
But, yeah, they closed one, but not the, the other.
The petitioner doesn't, wouldn't.
Sure, sure. Doesn't appear to, yeah.
Yeah.
We can certainly mandate it.
You know, he's closing this one on the Merriman Road front edge closest to the intersection. I don't, I don't know from a site circulation standpoint, but closing this one on the Plymouth Road frontage makes a lot of sense. I can't, I don't appreciate the need there.
Okay.
So I'm not going to add it.
That's fair. All right. Is there anything else from anyone? There's a lot of amendments to this. Mr. Yuhasi, have you been able to capture most of those?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Uh, all right, we have a motion on the floor to approve, heavily amended. Uh, is there any additional discussion on that motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll. This is a motion to approve.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Ms. DeNaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
No.
Mr. Dros.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes no. Chairman Wilshaw.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes. We'll go to the city council with a approving recommendation. Good luck, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Now we move on to item number two on our agenda.
Petition two zero two four dash one zero dash zero two dash one seven, submitted by CJ's Party Rentals, requesting waiver use approvals, approval under sections three point one seven of the city of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate a truck rental facility that includes the outdoor storage of budget rental trucks at three seven zero five five Industrial Road in the northwest quarter of section twenty-nine.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Yuhasi.
Okay, this is to operate the rental, uh, truck facility at the outdoor storage of, an outdoor storage of budget truck rentals. And the property is currently zoned M two, general manufacturing. It has one hundred and three feet along Industrial Road and a depth of one hundred ninety-two feet for a total site of nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six square feet. The surrounding properties are all also zoned M two. Uh, the existing conditions on the site include a building with, uh, general, or gross square foot area of eight thousand and eighty-two square feet. The, it's located, located at the front of the building is a ramp with a single truck well. To the south and west of the building are drive lanes to access neighboring properties. And parking is located along the eastern end of the building, and the site plan shows thirteen double-stripe parking spaces with one being accessible parking. Required for this petition is, requirements for parking on this petition are based off a ratio of one space for each employee computed on a basis of the greatest number of persons to be employed at any one period during the day or night. The business plan, uh, was submitted with the petition that describes four staff members being employed during peak months. The, uh, business plan also identifies that the company has six budget rental trucks. The total parking required for the site would be ten parking spaces. Uh, the site plan shows the rear seven parking spaces reserved for the budget truck parking. The remaining parking is dedicated to employee and customer parking. Uh, they also submitted a four-plan, uh, part of the business is, uh, party rental supplies, uh, which went in open office area and open storage. Uh, with that, I also have correspondence if you'd like to me to read from, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, if you could please read that out.
From the engineering department, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The subject parcel is designed, assigned the address range of three seven zero five five to three seven one zero five Industrial Road, with the address of three seven zero five five Industrial Road being assigned to the overall parcel. The existing parcel is currently served by public water main and sanitary sewer, as well as private stormwater sewer. The submittal does not indicate any changes to the existing utility lead, so we do not believe there will be any additional impacts to the public utilities with this proposal. Should changes to the existing building leads be needed, the owner shall submit proposed drawings to the department to determine if permits will be required. This is signed, uh, Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the police, uh, department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. There is a lack of information in the proposal in regard to what size trucks are planned to be stored on site. Any trucks exceeding the length of the highlighted spaces would protrude into the aisleway and disrupt the ingress and egress of traffic, including emergency vehicles. If the proposed truck can fit in the highlighted spaces without protruding into the aisleway, I have no objections to the petition. This is signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. And finally, from the treasurer's office, uh, as of today, water and taxes are current with the city in regards to this property. This is signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer.
All right. Is that the extent of the correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any. Our petitioner, I believe, is in our audience. Feel free to come forward. Again, we ask that you start with your name and address, and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charisse Jones.
Anthony Jones.
Welcome to our meeting. And what would you like to tell us about your business?
I'm the owner of CJ's Party Rental. I've been in business since twenty twenty-one. I started with eight, eight tables and fifteen chairs in March of twenty twenty-one. In October of twenty twenty-one, we bought our first warehouse, well, I should say bought, leased our first warehouse in Farmington Hills. We've been in Farmington Hills since twenty twenty-one, and our lease was up in October of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have grown tremendously. We went from twenty-four hundred square foot to now we need at least five thousand square foot.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to tell us about what you do?
If I may add, uh, my, Anthony Jones, um, the budget part came into play to help augment
our business when the season is over with. So we only, like I said, only use six trucks at, at the, at the max. So the budget trucks is to help us during offseason, during the winter months.
Okay. One of the questions that, or one of the issues that you heard during the correspondence was concern over the, the size of those trucks. Do you know what size those trucks will be that will be in those spaces?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The biggest truck that we have is a sixteen-foot truck.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, is there anything else that you'd like to tell us before we ask you questions?
No.
Okay, great. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Uh, any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Folks, tell us a little bit about what CJ Rentals does. What do, what do you rent? Um, so you got a little layer of time here.
We, um, rent tables, chairs, tents, glassware, flatware, dinnerware, um, linens. We're really, um, we have a big selection of linens. I have a hundred and eighty different colors, sizes, and textures. Glassware, we have probably about a good selection of five different glasswares. Um, we do a lot of weddings. We, we host the, um, we did an event with Rocket Mortgage where we did a tent for them. Um, we do a lot of events for the city of Novi. Um, we did a couple of events for the city of Farmington Hills. I have done a couple of events for the city of Detroit, and I also have done an event for the governor.
Very nice. How, how big a tent do you have?
The biggest tent that we have is a forty by sixty tent.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions, uh, from the commission. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward, anything that you'd like to say before we make our decision.
I would love to, um, be part of the Livonia, um, the city of Livonia. I believe that we can grow where we're at, and I believe that this is a good place for us.
Very good. Well, thank you, uh, Mrs. Anne, Mr. Jones, for, uh, your, for coming forward today. Let's, uh, um, close the public hearing at this time, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banjero.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. Uh, the request to operate a truck rental facility that includes the outdoor storage of budget rental trucks at three seven zero five five Industrial Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan, as received by the planning commission on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the open storage of rental trucks shall be restricted to the confined areas of the property as shown on the approved site plan. Any changes in locations and extent of recreational equipment storage shall first be approved by the planning and inspection departments. And number three, the only conforming signage is approved with this petition. Uh, I don't know, that'd make a lot of sense, but, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals.
All right, is there support?
Support.
We have, uh, support by Mrs. DeNaro. The motion has been made by Mr. Banjero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Mrs. DeNaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Dros.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wilshaw.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck, and thanks for being here in Livonia. All right, and now we move on to item number three on our agenda.
Petition two zero two four dash one zero dash zero two dash one eight, submitted by Mr. Miguel's, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section six point five one of the city of Livonia ord, zoning ordinance, as amended to construct an outdoor dining patio at three nine three zero five Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road, east of Newburgh Road, in the southwest quarter of section thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, Mr. Yuhasi.
This is to construct a permanent outdoor dining area at the restaurant, uh, which is currently zoned C two. To the north, uh, is C two, is the Sunco Station, Sunoco Station, and to the northeast of the property is M, zoned M one. East of the petition site is, uh, off, is an office building, zoned C two, and the part of it being zoned P parking. Uh, so the south of the site is PL Heinz Park, and to the west is another C two zoned property. The property measures, uh, one hu, one point three three acres in size with about one hundred and nine feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and a depth of about five hundred and twenty-seven feet. The new patio would extend from the rear of the building towards Heinz Park and have a to, a total proposed area of two thousand three hundred and eleven square feet. The patio flooring would be constructed of composite decking such as Trex. The proposed patio on the site plan is split into two sections, identified as outdoor patio and game area. The outdoor patio area is located on the western half of the patio and the seating, has seating for fifty-six people. The game area measures one thousand one hundred and thirty square feet with seating for an additional twelve. The main restaurant is accessible by two, uh, existing doors, one in the patio area and one in the gaming area. Emergency egress from the patio is available via a door along the western wall and a gate on the eastern fence. The outdoor patio is covered by a standing seam metal roof, and the southern and western walls made, would be made of composite siding material. The eastern side of the patio is open and separated from the game area by a forty-two inch fence with support beams. The outdoor, uh, patio is approximately twelve inches above the game area, but is accessible via stairs and a ramp. The south and east edges of the game area are surrounded by sixty-inch privacy fences. Mr. Miguel's currently has a hundred, seating for a hundred and forty customers, and the average, with an average number of employees per shift is of ten. Uh, the reason, this results in a parking requirement of one hundred and three parking spaces. The site plan shows that there are approximately a hundred and nine parking spaces provided. The site plan also shows the existing dumpster would be moved from the east lot line to approximately fifty-five feet southwest of the patio, uh, of the patio addition along the western property line. The new dumpster location will include two dumpsters that are enclosed by a six-foot split-faced CMU fence with a concrete cap and two sets of steel screening gates. With that, I also have some correspondence.
Okay, go ahead.
From the engineering department, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address of three nine three zero five Plymouth Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once permitting has been completed. The existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main and storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not indicate any proposed utility alterations, so we do not believe there will be any impacts to the existing system with the proposed, uh, project. Any disturbances with the Plymouth Road right of way will require permits with the Michigan Department of Transportation. Signed, Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the, uh, fire department, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct an outdoor patio on the property located at the above reference address. We have no objections to this proposal. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the traffic bureau, the police department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Signed, Paul Walters, the Sergeant of the Traffic Department Bureau. And finally, from the inspection department, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. The department has no objections to this petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Yuhasi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? I see no. Mr. Dros, thank you.
Quick question, yeah. Um, Jacob, is there any information about how stormwater is managed on this site? There's a lot of gravel and broken up pavement in the back of the site, and I know, you know, that directly could go towards the river, um, at Heinz Park, so I'm just kind of curious about that portion.
I do not have any, have any information on that. The petitioner may have, have more insight.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Mr. Dros. Any other questions for planning staff? If not, we'll get the petitioner up here to, uh, fill us in. Uh, petitioner can come forward to our podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Steve Dumont with Design Struck, two three six one seven John R. Road, Hazel Park. And I have with me, uh, Steve Savage, one of the restaurant owners. Uh, Jacob did a great job explaining the, uh, extent of the project. We plan on, like you said, a, a standing seam metal roof, and the question for the parking, we plan on cleaning all that up, re-ashvaulting that back. We've got a, a pretty big site there, five hundred foot deep, so, uh, to provide all the required parking. And if there's any other questions.
All right, let's see what the questions are available. Uh, any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Dros, is there anything you wanted to follow up with in particular to your question?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, as I look at the plan, it looks like the, um, the proposed parking as shown, um, doesn't go all the way back, and, and kind of getting back to that area of gravel and kind of broken up pavement. Is it your intent to basically convert that remaining area that's gravel into vegetation?
Correct.
That be preferred?
Uh, we're only going back to satisfy, um, the parking requirement, but that area is where it's all broken up. Beyond that is natural landscaping. We're just going to leave it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Especially if it's just running off. I would prefer.
Yeah, right. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Leave it as natural as possible.
Okay, very good. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna, and then Mr. Ventura.
The, uh, the western driveway, if you, if you look at your drawing, the western driveway shows, it appears like the driveway drives right through a parking spot or two in the back of the building.
You're talking on the west end there?
Yeah, the west side. And then, then of course, it's, it goes straight into the dumpsters as well. Is there, uh, is there room there? I don't see a, a measurement on here. Is there room to get through there, or is it tight?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty big area. Considering one of these parking spots is twenty feet, I think, uh, note from planning was it's fifty-four foot from. was it's fifty-four foot from the back of the, uh, the patio area? So I would, it's gotta be almost forty feet from the parking spot to the dumpsters.
In, 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 in north to south, right?
Yeah.
How about, how about from the, that parking spot furthest west to the property line, the driveway? Is there enough room to drive, drive a vehicle through there?
I can speak to just looking, if I'm comparing that distance where you're speaking of down to these exi, existing spots we currently have and it's, I guess it's a little bit smaller, but there's plenty of, it's, there's plenty of space to drive through at this, um, at the front of the building, so I'm, I'm guessing there's plenty over there too just based, just comparing the distance on this blueprint.
Yeah, the, the seven along the prop, the west property line and the four across the front, not including the handicap, those are all existing spots that they're currently using.
I'm talking about behind the building.
Oh.
Behind the building.
Yeah, you're talking about this one here.
You've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spots behind the building. I think that seventh spot to the west is probably too tight and it's.
So maybe we get rid of that.
Yeah, we could clip that one off. We're still.
I think it makes good sense to get it out of there. It gives good access to the dumpsters and it also.
Yeah.
It, it, it make it easier so no one's car gets hit.
I know those guys that pick up dumpsters and (laugh) they're not gentle. Um, yeah, for sure, we can do that.
That's a good recommendation, yeah.
They've tore apart so many dumpster enclosures.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
They're never gentle as commissioners either. All right, uh, any, oh, well, Mr. Ventura's next.
Uh, can you tell us what kinda games happened in the game area there?
Well, I think what they're proposing right now is just like cornhole. Are you thinking about badgy at all or anything like that? Just cornhole? Just give people something to do outside while they're.
Right, is that he, is that area heated at all?
No, there's no roof over that area at all. Just the, the fifty-six, uh, seating part has a roof over it, not the entire area.
But the covered area does not, it's just, it's, it's, it's not four seasons, no heat.
Right, no.
We have a very similar setup in our Brownstown location and we're mimicking that with this proposal.
Can you tell us about the materials and colors that this is gonna be constructed of?
Yeah, it's gonna be composite siding like a hardy panel type, uh, exterior siding, standing seam metal roof.
Colors would just match the building, which is essentially.
Kind of brown and white.
Black and white.
Black and white.
Yeah. A dark color and a white, yeah. So it would just, it would just flow with the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Okay. Hold on, we're here. Okay, anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? No one coming forward? Anything else that you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
Uh, we're looking forward to a approval time.
Very good, thank you. All right, let's, uh, close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to construct an outdoor dining patio at three nine three zero five Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to the following additional conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as sheet AS one dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as revised, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the proposed patio plan identified as sheet number DD one dated August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, that the maximum number of outdoor patio patron seats shall not exceed a total of, it says twenty, but then we've got sixty-eight in the parentheses. Is it supposed to be sixty-eight? Yeah, a total of sixty-eight. Uh, number four, that there shall be no outdoor speakers or sound equipment, including televisions allowed at any time. Number five, that all light fixtures shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property, property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number six, that any form of outdoor advertising or signage shall be prohibited on any of the patio structures, including the fencing, seating and tables without the prior written approval by the city of Livonia Inspection Department. Number seven, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number eight, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the buildings or around the windows. Number nine, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number ten, pursuant to section thirteen dot thirteen of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval.
Is there support?
Support.
I hear Mr. Bongero supporting it. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
I think the petitioners may.
I, yeah, I believe the petitioner may have a question.
We had a question. Um, you mentioned no TVs or music outside. This is a commercial area, there's no residential adjacent, uh, properties. I'm sure Steve would like to have a couple TVs out there for big games and so forth. Uh, and as far as music, I don't know, I mean, even.
Music seemed a bit more important.
Inside the restaurant, there's always music.
It wouldn't be loud ever in our hours of operation, we're a family restaurant, so it's, the latest we close Friday, Saturday is ten o'clock, but we definitely, music's a very important piece of the dining experience, so we definitely.
Especially for a Mexican restaurant. I mean, it's, it's festive, um, and if we could have those allowed and then maybe some parameters as far as decibels or hours or something like that, we'd be, like to have that.
All right, I understand your request. I'm gonna go back to the maker of the motion and see what he would like to do. I know there have been, I can, as I recall, we have had some petitions where we've, uh, restricted outdoor to certain hours or decibels.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, um, with, to the discretion of the planning department.
Okay.
Okay.
And supporter's okay with that?
I have no problem. I'd see it kind of as a need, so.
Appreciate your consideration there.
Okay, so we will, uh, make that, uh, adjustment in the proposed approving resolution. Uh, is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll. This is motion to approve.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Droz.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Willschau.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with approving recommendation. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And, uh, next we can move on to item number four.
Petition two zero two four dash one zero dash zero two dash one nine submitted by Cooper's Hawk Winery requesting waiver use approval under section six point zero three and three point one three of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate with an on-premises class C liquor license, which is the sale of beer, wine, spirits for consumption on the premises, and operate an off-premises SDM liquor license, which is the sale of packaged beer and wine, in a full-service restaurant with outdoor dining at one seven, one one seven North Laurel Park Drive located on the west side of Laurel Park between I two seventy-five and Newburgh Road in the southeast quarter of section seven.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Yuhasi.
This site is, uh, currently zoned C four and part of a priorly, uh, uh, approved site plan, uh, that included the demolition of a portion of the existing Holiday Inn and construction of three new buildings, including a, including a five-story hotel, Home Two Suites by Hilton, a Cooper's Hawk Restaurant and Capital Grill. Uh, in C four, uh, restaurants and hotels are treated as a, uh, permitted use, and the Cooper Hawks Winery is shown on the southwest portion of the parcel. Parking surrounds the building. The restaurant is listed as being eleven thousand forty square feet with indoor seating for two hundred and sixty and outdoor seating for forty. The Cooper's Hawks Hawk would have, uh, fifty employees. The floor plan of the restaurant has a main dining area, a separate bar that includes dining, a tasting bar, a network room, a kitchen and restrooms. The outdoor dining patio is adjacent to the bar on the east side of the restaurant. The patio would have an overhead canopy and be enclosed with planters on, in, on the railings. Section six point two two of the zoning ordinance treats class C as a waiver use in District C four. Section six point two two prohibits establishments having liquor licenses such as C, class C Tavern Club and Small Distiller from operating within one thousand feet of another. A number of class, existing class C liquor licenses are within one thousand feet of the proposed Cooper Hawk, including Red Robin, Buffalo Wild Rings, Wings, Bar Louie and Archie's Tavern. As such, the one thousand foot separation provision must be waived by City Council. Additionally, SDM liquor license are permitted with waiver use approval pursuant to section six point zero three of the zoning ordinance, but there are no SDM, uh, there is all a similar provision saying that there will be no S, SDM licensed establishments within five hundred feet of the existing, uh, SDM establishment. There are no other SDM licensed establishments within five hundred feet of the site. Both sections six point zero three and six point two two specify that a proposed licensed establishment cannot be located within four hundred feet from any church or school building. Uh, there are no churches or schools within four hundred feet of the proposed site. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I have some correspondence.
Yes, there's a number of items of correspondence. If you could read those?
In accordance with your requests, uh, from the engineering department, in accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The subject parcel is assigned the address one seven one one seven North Laurel Park Drive, not one seven one two seven, two three as indicated in the petition. The developer has submitted drawings to this department for permits and the proposed building will be serviced by new storm sanitary and water main. We do not believe there will be any additional impacts to the public utilities with this proposal. This is signed, Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the fire department, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above reference address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulation. Plans and, and permits for suppression will be reviewed upon receipt. Plans and permits for a fire, a fire alarm will be reviewed upon receipt. A fire hydrant shall be placed within one hundred feet of the structure's fire department's connection. A further detailed review, plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. Uh, from the traffic bureau, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Also from the police department, we have reviewed the plans submitted by Cooper's Hawk Winery requesting waiver use approval under section six point zero three of the zoning ordinance as amended to operate with an on-premise class C liquor license, sale of beer, wine and spirits for consumption on the premises, and an off-premises SDM liquor license, sale of packaged beer and wine at one seven one one seven North Laurel Park Drive located on the west side of Laurel Park between I two seventy-five and Newburgh Road in the southeast one quarter of section seven. The review of the plans has determined that the request does not comply with the prior separation requirement guidelines. There are numerous class C licensed businesses with, inside the separation requirement distance from the proposed Cooper Hawk Winery site. We would recommend that the planning commission and city council maintain separation requirement guidelines. It is our opinion that these guidelines are good for local established, establishment businesses and maintains Livonia's family atmosphere. Signed, Jeffrey Renee, Special Services Bureau. From the, uh, Department of Inspection, pursuant to the request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. Signage has not been re, has not been reviewed. Signage shall be conforming or a variance from the zoning board of appeals will be required. The department has no further objections to this petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. And finally, as of today, water and taxes are current with the city in regards to this property. Uh, this is signed, Susan Nash, City Treasurer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yuhasi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioners in the audience, feel free to come forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Jennifer Lucina, um, thirty-five hundred Lacy Road, Downers Grove, Illinois.
Thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
What would you like to tell us about your request for SDM and class C licenses?
Um, I mean, what, what questions do you have? We, um, we're a family establishment, um, we're really excited to come to the, to the town and be part of your, um, community. Um, our restaurant, um, the SDM license will boast a wine club pickup and, you know, retail wine for our guests to take a little bit of Cooper's Hawk home with them and enjoy with their families. Um, and our on-premise consumption is, you know, it's a mixture of, uh, wine, we have a great, um, you know, cocktail program, there's beer, just like any other restaurant would have.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
We, we had a chance to meet with you not that long ago to get the approval for your restaurant, so this is just sort of a, an addition, uh, obviously a very needed one for the type of business you're in. Uh, let's see if there's any questions for you.
Absolutely.
Uh, any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair, I'm loaded with them tonight.
Mr. Karen Magna.
What are your hours of operation?
Um, we typically open at eleven o'clock, um, Monday through Friday we close, um, I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday we close around nine o'clock. Um, Fridays we're usually open until ten or eleven, um, at the latest. And Saturdays and Sundays, we, um, we've opened a new brunch program, so we like to open at ten AM to offer those brunch items along with the full service menu, um, and then close at, you know, on Saturdays I believe we're closed at eleven and then Sundays at nine.
Okay, and I asked you this question at the study session. So I can, I can walk in and carry out Cooper's Hawk wine? I can't walk in and carry out a case of Budweiser?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So people that wanna come there and get something, they're, you're selling your wine at your store?
Our wine and that, that's all we're selling. It's our, it's our proprietary, proprietary wine, correct.
Very good, thank you.
My pleasure.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Karen Magna. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Long.
Are there any Cooper's Hawk Winery locations that do not have the ability to sell wine?
No, we wouldn't be able to operate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. If there, is there any other questions? Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else. Anything else you'd like to say?
I just can, I confirm that address. It's one seven one one seven North Laurel Park Drive.
That seems to be the correct address according to our engineering department, yes.
I love a confirmed address.
Yes, make sure you put the right one on the building, right?
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, I will close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to utilize an SDM liquor license and class C liquor license in connection with the operations of a full-service restaurant at seventeen one one seven North Laurel Park Drive is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that this approval is subject to City Council waiving the one thousand foot separation requirement between class C licensed establishments. Number two, that the maximum customer seating count shall not exceed a total of two hundred and sixty interior seats and forty exterior seats. Number three, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall, shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number four, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number five, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. And number six, pursuant to section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Karen Magna. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Apparently, I've attracted another petitioner.
Our petitioners, come back. Do you, do you have a question, Mrs. Lucina?
I just had one question about the, um, uh, signage, additional signage. So typically we like to put up banners just saying, you know, now hiring or coming soon or now open, and then occasionally, um, you know, during the holiday season, but just curious if that is the banners and the signage you're referring to.
Uh, Mr. Yuhasi, this is sort of standard verbiage that we have in our petitions.
Yeah, that's... For like temporary signage like that, you would just talk to our Inspection Department.
Thank you. I'm good.
Yeah, we're thinking more of...
Permanent. Got it.
Yeah.
No, like floaty signs.
Yeah, yeah, the wavy and wacky.
Got it.
Yeah.
No worries.
Exactly.
We won't do that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion on the floor to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Careman. Is there any discussion? If not, if the Secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Careman votes aye. Ms. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Dros?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Chairman will show.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council and Improving Recommendation. Good luck with the...
Thank you, everybody.
We look forward to the project opening.
Yes, so...
I was going to suggest, if it didn't get approved, we might want to change your name to Cooper's Hawk Watery, but I think you can keep the winery name in there.
I'll take that suggestion backwards.
Okay. At least you can keep the winery in there for now. All right. Now we move on to our miscellaneous section of our agenda. Item number five.
Petition 2024-10-02, submitted by Zach's Auto Wash, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.11 and 1.3.13 of the Livonia zoning ordinance, as amended, to reconfigure the parking lot and drive-through facilities, and remodel the exterior of the existing car wash at 36001 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Levann and Yale, in the northeast quarter of Section 32.
Thank you, sir. And we'll go to Mr. Uhazzi.
Okay. The current site is 1.37 acres in size and currently zoned C2, general business. The property has about 150 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. Along Plymouth Road to the east and west are zoned C2. A portion along Almira Road Street on the west is zoned P for parking. South and southeast of the petition's site is zoned N1 neighborhood. They have... The petitioner has submitted updated drawings since the last time we met. The... This includes... But the proposal includes removing the quick-change automotive bays on the east side of the building, reconfiguration of the drive-through lanes and parking, remodeling the exterior of the existing building. The existing car wash and quick-change building is one-story and about 6,855 square feet. After the proposed remodel, the remaining building would be 5,560 square feet. The overall dimensions of the new car wash would be 43 feet by 153 feet. Access to the site is provided via two access points. The existing driveway would remain... Driveways would remain in place. The drive to the east provides... Would provide ingress into the car wash lane line and oil... Excuse me. And the drive to the west would provide egress back to Plymouth Road. The drive-through has two service lanes, which will provide access to the car wash. The lanes commence along the west side of the property... I'm sorry, the east side of the property, and the east side of the property, a proposed attendant booth is located on the west of the pay stations. The cars would stack and then loop around north from the south side of the building, where the facility's entrance would be. The new curbs would delineate the car wash service lanes from access to parking areas. Beyond the pay stations, the service lanes would taper to form a single drive aisle to manage vehicles as they enter the facility. As customers exit the car wash, they can either leave the site utilizing the western driveway onto Plymouth Road, or remain on the property by turning left along a short drive aisle that loops back to access the facility's parking lot and vacuums. The existing bypass service lanes would be moved north closer to the building, and four angled employee parking spaces would be added to the rear of the site. Existing vacuum stations located at the southern edge of the site would be removed. Eleven parking spots... Spaces would be added to the west of the building, each with a dedicated vacuum station. The floor plan shows the layout of the automated auto wash and existing office and restrooms. The floor plan states that all existing doors and windows would remain. The provided elevations, one of the service bay doors will be removed, and the remaining door would be centered. Elevation plans show the auto wash service doors would be surrounded by dark metal panels with the addition of a tower measuring 23 feet and 9 inches, made of aluminum metal panels, and a new parapet with a height of 17 feet, also made of dark metal panel. The west side of the front... The west side of the front building wall would have a new infill window. The rest of the building would consist of existing CMU block and phonophilic metal panels, surrounded by existing... The existing parapet. The elevation plans show one wall sign on the building, but sizing is not listed in the submitted plans. The ordinance requires parking of at least 20 spaces for auto wash establishments. The site plan chose 11 parking stalls within the parking lot on the west side of the building, which are equipped with the self-service vacuum stations. The spaces would measure 12 feet in width, allowing additional room for consumers to... Customers to maneuver the vacuum equipment around the vehicles for easier access. There are an additional four employee spaces for this... For a site total of 14 spaces. The deficiency of parking would require City Council a waiver for the parking requirements. A dumpster enclosure is shown on the southwest corner of the site, accessible via the bypass lane. A 17-foot-wide turnaround access area is provided across the dumpster to allow garbage truck maneuvering. No other details are provided for the dumpster enclosure. The updated landscape plan shows 13 shrubs would screen the dumpster enclosure, and Section 10.03 requires three full-sized trees, one ornamental, and 22 shrubs along Plymouth Road. The plan shows... The landscape plan shows three full-sized trees, one ornamental, and 22 shrubs. Open space requirements require 14 trees and landscaping... And the landscaping plan shows 15 trees listed. The zoning ordinance also requires a 6-foot-high masonry wall or opaque fence with or without 20-foot-wide green belt buffer, with one tree per 20 linear feet, subject to City Council review and approval. Currently, a 6-foot-high masonry wall is along the entire length of the south property line, and 14-foot trees are along the fence line. So just a note from the... Our previous meeting, it's essentially the same plan, just reversing where the entrance and exit are, and where the park... What side the parking is located on.
Okay.
And then with that, Mr. Chairman, I have some correspondence.
Sure, go ahead.
From the Engineering Division, in accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address range of 35989 to 36001 Plymouth Road, with the address of 36001 Plymouth Road being assigned to the overall parcel. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main and Stormwater. The submitted drawing does not include any proposed utility information, but we do not believe there will be any adverse impacts to the existing system with the proposed improvements. Although the drawings do not indicate any utility alterations, it should be noted that the... Any proposed development may be required to provide stormwater improvements and detention per Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Permitting for stormwater activities will be through Wayne County Department of Public Services. Any disturbances with the Plymouth Road right-of-way will require permits through MDOT, including drive approach and/or sidewalk removals and placements. This is signed Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Department, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to renovate an existing commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal. A further detailed plan will take place when the Division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal. This is signed Paul Walters, Sergeant, Traffic Bureau. And finally, from the Inspection Department, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. Signage has not been reviewed. Any excess number of signs... Of signage will require a variance from the Board of Appeals. The Department has no further objections to this petition. Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspections.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Uhazzi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see anything. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. You can tell us about your site plan improvements. Good evening.
Good evening. Rachel Whitman with Krieger Klatt Architects.
Good.
Good evening. Brendan Amori, Michigan Washco DBA, Zach's Auto Wash.
Jamie Antonovich at Well. So I'd answer the site plan questions. We got people for any other questions you might have.
Excellent.
I guess a quick note on the layout. You know, based on our evaluation of circulation, we made that adjustment, mirrored it. It also provides some additional buffering from the vacuums from the residential. So, you know, there's some other improvements with that change.
Okay. Very good. Let's see if there's any questions for you on this petition. Is there any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Dros?
Mr. Chair, one question that I had, and I don't know the answer to it, but the barrier-free space is kind of doubling as one of the vacuum spots. Does there need to be one for the employees, too?
I would say this is very typical for our car wash clients, to have the barrier space incorporated with vacuums. There isn't a requirement to have a separate space for employee ADA space. The rear location probably wouldn't be the best spot for that as well. So, yeah, I guess those are my thoughts on that requirement, and based on, you know, other car washes we deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good question, Mr. Dros. Any other questions? Mr. Dros, continue on.
Yeah, one additional one. At our study session, we talked about the Plymouth Road Development Authority, kind of the knee walls and the fencing that we see throughout, but it's much less prevalent on the western side of the city.
Sure.
There are some, but I noticed it wasn't on the plan, so maybe speak to that, and would you be willing to add it?
That was a discussion that we had, you know, following that meeting. You know, based on the location in the city along Plymouth Road, you know, there are costs for the walls. I guess there'd be open some discussion, maybe additional landscaping, but, you know, additional costs for the walls were something we're willing to add at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner? If no one has any questions, I'll ask a couple. I've never seen, at least as far as I can recall, a car wash that has this sort of inverted flow... Traffic flow, sort of a, I guess I would call it clockwise flow of traffic as opposed to counterclockwise. Have you done this on other properties?
Yeah, I mean, the circulation, I guess, just depends on the site we're working with and the access points. You know, here, to reach the building, either side was viable, and, you know, the traffic between the vacuums and the car wash is low enough that the movements, you know, would be acceptable.
Okay. I don't see any particular immediate concern about it. The only thing I think is, I'm guessing the reason most of the time we see a counterclockwise flow of traffic is in that way, is a person's rounding the corner from, say, the pay station into the car wash, it's on the driver's side as they're making that tight turn, so they have better visibility of that turn.
Yeah, that would be the main reason they would do that. We have decent maneuverability here to make that less of a concern. Where there's a smaller footprint or tighter site, you know, that becomes more important.
And I do appreciate that you're doing this to try to mitigate some of the noise concerns over the vacuum, so I appreciate that. The other question I had was the dumpster... I'm going to take Mr. Careman's thunder here. The dumpster enclosure, you have a truck to come service that will have to essentially come into a driveway that's marked as exit-only on the site plan, drive... And kind of drive against traffic. I assume that that dumpster is probably not going to be serviced in the middle of the day when there's cars there, but how are you going to manage that?
Yeah, correct. I mean, based on, I guess, the limited collection, we view that as an acceptable option there. It's against traffic for bypass use, but, you know, be coordinated not to be during busy hours. That way, it doesn't conflict with, you know, people stacking to enter. That is a two-way drive, so it can accommodate it a little better than the east side. And it gets the dumpster away from the residential side as well, even though collections aren't as frequent as they might be at a, you know, a place that would generate more trash.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. I'll leave it to our dumpster expert if there's any additional questions.
Mr. Chair, I did see that.
Mr. Careman?
You know, you have that turnout where the garbage truck can back into. If you clocked that dumpster 90 degrees and you just did it with the flow of the traffic, it could dump and drive right out, you wouldn't even need that asphalt turnaround.
Which location, I guess, 90 to what?
To the driveway. So if you clocked it so, when you're coming in the east driveway, come around the east driveway, hit that thing back up and go right out, you wouldn't even need... You wouldn't even need the asphalt.
I guess I would maybe have to see where you were proposing that.
This one, Mr. Careman, I believe is discussing is to turn your dumpster...
To the right.
90 degrees to the right, which would then allow trucks to come in.
You're saying to face the drive coming around.
Yeah, have the dumpster gate face east.
I mean, I guess I have a little concern about the width of that drive for a trash truck, but it's something we could evaluate if the location is otherwise acceptable.
The location, to me, it looks good, but it'd save you the asphalt on the turnaround there and driving against the grain of traffic. But just a couple comments you might want to look at.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Careman, for those insights. Is there any other questions or comments to our petitioner? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? If not, anything else you'd like to say before we make our decision?
Okay. I think we're good.
All right. We appreciate your team being here today for this meeting, and with that, a motion is in order.
Chair, I'll take it.
All right. Well, with Mr. Careman.
Proving resolution that the request to reconfigure the parking lot and drive-through facilities and remodel the exterior of the existing car wash at 36001 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, in the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as C03, dated October 11, 2024, prepared by Atwell Group, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the hours of operation shall be limited to the following, Monday through Saturday, 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., and Sunday from 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. Number three, the landscape plan identified as L1, dated November 5, 2024, prepared by Allen Design, are hereby... Are approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Number five, underground sprinklers shall be installed for all landscaping and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, the exterior elevations planned dated... Identified as A200 and A300, dated October 11, 2024, prepared by Krieger Klatt Architects, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening, consisting of material compatible in color with other exterior materials on the building. Number eight, the three walls of the trash dumpster shall be constructed... shall be constructed out of building materials to complement the building, and the enclosure gates shall consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Number nine, all light fixtures shall not exceed a height of 20 feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring onto adjacent roadways. All exterior lights shall be turned off or dim between 8:30 p.m. and 7:30 a.m. Number 10, the Inspection Department shall review the existing concrete wall along the south property line and, if needed, be brought up to the zoning ordinance's current specifications. Number 11, only conforming signage is approved with this petition. Any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 12, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building and/or around the windows. Number 13, unless approved by the Inspection Department, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number 14, the plans referenced in this approving resolutions shall be submitted to the Inspection Department with a building permit application. And number 15, per Section 13.13 of the Levonia Zoning Ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, the approval shall be null and void after one year period.
Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Bongero, is there any discussion on the motion? Very no discussion. If the Secretary's right, please call the law.
Karen Magnos votes aye. Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Dros.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen, Chairman Wilshaw.
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I guess to clarify, would that be December 2nd, the next meeting?
We don't know exactly.
We will contact you with the exact date.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not exactly sure what their schedule is.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Good night to you. And then next we have number six.
McKenna Associates presenting the MSHDA Housing Initiative Incentive Readiness Grant to update the Levonia 21 Master Plan Project Kickoff and Progress Report.
Okay, this is a new project that the Planning Department's working on. Mr. Ujazi, did you want to say anything about this?
I can just introduce Donovan from McKenna Associates.
Excellent.
He is helping with the master plan update.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Ujazi. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening and entertaining me as it is later in the night. So again, thank you. As mentioned, my name is Donovan Smith. I am the principal planner with McKenna and Associates. And I've been working with the Planning Department staff with their MISHDA grant. So I'm here to kick off what that is and what comes with it and the master plan amendment process that the City of Levonia will be going through over the next 10 or so months.
All right, great.
So I did have a PowerPoint. Were you able to pull that up?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Which one is it, the?
Should be the one labeled for the Planning Commission. Yeah, no, there might be. Yeah, one's for today and one's for tomorrow. Awesome.
All right, Mr. Smith, tell us about what we're doing.
All right, so if you can move to the next slide, actually. So just a brief overview of kind of the agenda we'll cover. I'll just give a few introductions of the project team. I will go over the MISHDA grant itself. I will describe the project approach and how we plan on accomplishing the master plan update. And then we'll go over the project schedule, and then I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And then I'll kind of give you a brief overview of some next steps. So if you may be familiar, Paul Lippens, he was a part of last master plan update. He's still with McKenna, he's still working with us. So he's a part of this project team. He would be the community manager, but he's just helping out a lot with the quarterbacking and making sure the master plan amendment is kind of consistent with what was kind of done with the previous efforts. Myself, principal planner, I'll be the project manager. So you'll see a lot of me at these meetings and maybe some of the other meetings as we go through this process. And then we have Alexis Pharaoh, she's an associate planner with McKenna. She is also helping out, as well as Andrew Manzinelli. He'll also be project assisting with this master plan update. So you may see some combination of all of us, again, here or at a subsequent meeting. So our project approach, keep going. So in January of 2024, MISHDA released what is called the Housing Readiness Incentive Grant. And then it was later, probably around October of this year, they released another round of dollars. And what it does is it allows communities that have an interest in expanding and supporting ordinances, master plan updates, and updates to the zoning ordinance in support of housing affordability, supply diversity, and improvements to the overall housing stock of a community. And we can do that in two ways. One is either with master plan updates or with zoning ordinance updates. So we thought this would be a good time to update your 2021 master plan. As you know, they have five-year windows. So we're kind of right on track in terms of the kind of greater timeline in updating your master plan. Part of this grant, we are amending the current master plan, and I'll kind of go into some more details later on that end. But through that amendment process, it will extend the life of your master plan for five years. So you kind of get a little bit of the benefit of both of implementing and continuing the existing work that was done with your master plan, carrying that forward, but also part of the MISHDA grant is that emphasis on housing. So there gets to be an amendment to your master plan that is kind of dedicated strictly to housing, and that's going to be really helpful when you start making long-term zoning recommendations and changes to your zoning ordinance. Which slide are you on? So some of the objectives, just briefly, of this master plan amendment update is one, we're meeting the requirements of the MISHDA Housing Readiness Incentive Grant, which is in partnership with redevelopment-ready communities programs through the MUDC. So the City of Levonia, I believe, is engaged in RRCs. Not engaged, okay. There are two tracks. There's an engaged track and a non-engaged track. So as a non-engaged track, you're eligible. So, but the program still supports it whether you're engaged or not. The objective of that grant program is to implement the housing goals. So we're taking the existing efforts of your master plan, those goals and objectives, and we're kind of pulling those back to the surface, looking at them, doing some housing analysis, and then we're kind of implementing and coming up with strategies to carry those actions forward. As I mentioned, we are looking to amend the 2021 or the Levonia Division 21 Master Plan with housing implementation strategies and recommendations and improvements to the zoning ordinance. And then lastly, we are looking at developing conceptual site frameworks for middle housing. And I'll give some more details around middle housing. And just briefly, I'll just give a note. The MISHDA grant, one of the aspects of creating more housing or looking at strategies for more housing is middle housing. And I'll, I think we get to that maybe in a couple of slides. But that's a kind of core aspect of the grant, which is why you may see it come up a few times. So the kind of narrative scope for this project, I'm sorry, it's just a little later this evening, is we'll be putting together and working with the steering committee to develop a progress report, looking at some of the goals of the master plan and using those to kind of either come up with amendment goals, additional goals, or kind of reaffirming some of those existing goals. We'll be conducting market research, looking at the housing data for the City of Levonia, and using those to create additional insights to help inform that master plan amendment. We'll look to develop the conceptual middle housing plan, looking at select sites and areas in the city, and then coming up with concepts around middle housing and middle housing types to see how these types of improvements can kind of replicate themselves within the community. And then lastly, we'll be amending, formally amending, the master plan with the accompanying zoning plan that typically comes with master plan updates and amendments. So currently, your Vision 21 Master Plan has, towards the end of its book, the action section, there are, I believe, eight sections that kind of give general goals and objectives for housing, sustainability, parks and recreation, and a few other categories, infrastructure, things like that. So we will primarily be looking at two sections, the housing in neighborhoods, and then there's a infrastructure section that we'll be looking at. I believe that's chapter eight or goal eight. Yep, there. And then we'll be looking at the conventional zoning practices and recommendations that were also adopted in that plan. Again, to make sure that we're being consistent and pushing these things forward rather than kind of looking at it and kind of disregarding it. As I mentioned, we will be working to put together a residential market analysis to further inform the housing types and middle housing strategies. So we look at home values, median income, the current housing stock, occupancy, as well as population trends. We also recently got our more data related to the 2020 census, so we'll be able to use kind of some of that new information to inform this plan. As well as looking at economic factors related to housing, employment, income, tenure, the age of housing, rent as a whole, and then cost burden and homeowner cost. So we kind of look at all these things, and we'll kind of aggregate it and include it within that housing amendment. Next slide, please. So middle housing, just in a brief summary, the way development has happened, really nationwide, it's not really a Michigan-specific or Levonia-specific thing, but the way development has happened over the grand period of time, there was a time where we were really good at building single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, those missing middle types of homes. And then we got really good at building apartments. And then when those came, all of the kind of missing middle types of housing, you see less and less developments of that nature. So you start to see single-family, which is one end of the scale, and then you get, you know, high-rise apartments, mid-rise, really dense apartments. But it's that type of housing stock in between that communities tend to find not a huge stock of. And those types of housing are the types of housing that offer additional types of income bands and housing opportunities. So when we say missing middle or middle housing, these are the types of housing typologies that we're typically talking about. Okay, yep. So we'll also be putting together a zoning recommendations action plan similar to the one that is currently in your plan, but this will be specific to the housing amendments. This will outline the various steps and actions and changes you can make to your zoning ordinance that would allow the implementation of these types of housing types and how they could be established within the city. So the master plan will kind of give you the guide, but there will be initial work, additional work after the adoption of the plan. And this zoning section is kind of the framework and guide to do that. Yep, thank you. So your current plan is the Vision 21 plan, and we will be looking to do an amendment, and this would add an additional five years to that plan. So you won't have to make another amendment till 2029, 2030, around that window. And again, some of the main focuses of this amendment will be providing the goals and objectives for housing, giving details around the definitions and typologies that are encouraged and supported by the community related to middle housing, as well as providing the zoning plan and the implementation plan for those only recommendations and objectives. And for our project schedule, kind of go to the next slide. Thank you. We do have three kind of community engagement proposed activities. We do plan on having another activity with the Planning Commission, and you'll see that on the next slide. When we'll kind of come here, kind of represent some of the activities and findings we've been working on since we started about a month ago. We'll kind of report out to that, and then we'll kind of go over some of the goals and objectives we've developed so we can have an opportunity to have feedback. But that will be a public meeting or an open meeting. It won't be a formal public meeting, but it'll be an open meeting so the public is kind of encouraged and is open to participate. We are also looking to put together a community survey related to housing and just to, again, provide additional opportunities to poll the residents and collect their input. And then we plan on coming back towards, I would say, late spring next year with those housing or middle housing recommendations and concepts. Again, so we have an opportunity to go back and forth and kind of discuss some of the things that we've come up with in that process. Next slide, please. So briefly, this is about a 12-month project schedule. Like I said, we started about a month ago, so we're kind of early in our second month. We are proposing to come back in January, but we know that's the beginning of the year, so that date may get adjusted, but we'll be working with staff to determine the best time to come back. Looking to come back with some more public engagement and workshops around spring, so that could be March or April. And then we're looking to come back sometime midsummer, early to midsummer, to represent those housing strategies. And then we'll come back one more time towards the end of the summer, and this would be to present kind of all the information we collected. We'll probably have a draft at that point, a soft draft that you can start to look at, as well as providing those zoning recommendations. So you'll be able to kind of go again through all of those kind of, and we'll have that feedback. Once everyone's kind of on the same page and we have that draft, we'll release it. We'll come back, request for it to be released to the public for 45 days for amendments. That will be released, and then we'll come back for a public hearing, and then we'll go through the adoption process around early, mid-fall of next year. So that'd be around October-ish of 2025. And that is the overview of the MISHDA Housing Readiness Incentive Grant, and the master plan amendment will be working with the city. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Thank you.
That's a great presentation, Mr. Smith. I appreciate you doing that for us. Is there any questions about this project that's going to be kicking off?
I just have a quick question.
Of course, yeah.
So this is, this is like a planning grant, and once all of the recommendations are put together, is there going to be a follow-up opportunity to get like an implementation grant for this? Or is it too early to even have that conversation?
So the MISHDA program, at least for this program, it's, communities only get one shot at the grant itself. So this grant is for the master plan amendment. It would have to go through a separate kind of funding process to do the implementation of the zoning ordinance. But it is something that we could help you out with once we get to that point in the process.
Great.
We would actually love to do that. We like to do the master plan and the ordinance amendments because, you know, it keeps that consistency, and we kind of already know the temperament and how everyone kind of feels about getting through that process. So if it is something you're interested in, we can kind of support in that endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Naro. Mr. De Naro, Mr. Dros.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with regard to the missing middle study, is that going to include any sort of site studies about what that might look like in Levonia?
Yes, so that is the, I said, the conceptual site designs for middle housing. That is that site analysis. So we'll be working with the planning staff, and then there's a steering committee. And we'll be working with those groups to come up with those sites, and then those will be the sites that we'll use to create those conceptual layouts of how those housing strategies could look like, yes.
Great, seems like a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dros. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
Is the whole purpose of MISHDA to develop middle housing in communities? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's not their specific purpose. So nationwide, you may have heard there's this what people term as in a housing crisis. And the kind of crux of that housing crisis is the lack of this middle housing type of typologies. So Michigan and really a lot of states are coming up with programs and ways to encourage planning that kind of addresses that issue. So one of the ways to do it is through updates to your zoning ordinance and master plan. One thing that we've identified is a lot of communities, because, like I said, we got really good at single families and apartments, it's very difficult to find communities that have really good zoning ordinances that implement or allow these kind of middle housing types. So it is a good time Um, so it is a, a good time in Michigan, because a lot of communities are kind of going through this process of looking at their zoning ordinances and their master plans and looking at ways to implement this. Um, and then lastly, I would add, your Vision 21 plan had, uh, middle housing typologies in it. It was a, a very good kind of first step at looking at what these types of homes, um, and housing options can look like in the city of Livonia. Uh, so it kind of works out just in good timing that about four or five years later, this grant, uh, is released, and we can actually implement where the plan left off in 2021.
Yeah, timing, timing sounds like it fits in well. What other local communities around here are going through this process?
Ooh, okay, um, the city of Livonia, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The city of Inkster, um, working through theirs. Um, Highland Park, uh, Royal Local Township, I know these are a little further out. I'm trying to just run through the list in the top of my head. Um, Plymouth, uh, I think Plymouth Township, um, they're working on theirs. Uh, Wayne, city of Wayne is working on theirs. Uh, Westland completed their master plan, um, maybe earlier this year, so they may be working on theirs. Um, I think those are just the ones that are coming off the top of my head. But they're about, if you go to the Mishta, if you Google Mishta H R I, there's, uh, you can go down to the page, and they have an actual map that shows all the communities that are engaged in this grant process.
Okay, and the last question I've got is, you, you talked about a survey that's going to be going out to the residents. Is the, is the survey going to ask the residents, do you want middle housing in your city? Or what, 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 what percent of middle housing are you looking for? Is it, is that going to be addressed in the survey?
In, in one fashion or another, the objective of that survey will have a lot of design focus, um, on appearance and, and looking at how these things fit within the existing framework. Um, and then they'll have a lot of kind of introductory topics, just informing the, the public of these types of housing, um, and just getting their feedback on what the expectation for duplexes is, uh, what the expectation for low-rise, mid-rise apartments or townhomes, uh, just getting a feedback and a sense of what their, um, design preferences are. So when these projects do come, they fit within, uh, the fabric that the community is kind of already expecting.
Thank you. Good answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kira Magna. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? If not, uh, excellent questions by my colleagues, and, and I just want to say that, uh, I'm, I'm excited about this, because certainly middle housing in the city of Livonia is, uh, something that's, you don't see a lot of. Uh, as I look around the city, I, I know there's a few duplexes in certain areas and, uh, condominiums and, and some townhomes, but, uh, it is definitely an area that's, uh, probably not very well-developed, and, and a couple of my colleagues on the planning commission and others have, uh, decided to join the steering committee and, and help work through this process to develop, uh, these options, uh, better. And, uh, using this grant money, I think that's a wonderful project. It's also excellent in the sense that we are, uh, continuing to look at our, uh, master plan and make revisions to it. Uh, we put a lot of effort into the current master plan and, uh, and the zoning ordinance, uh, to make some major revisions to it. And a lot of times, these master plans end up sitting on a shelf somewhere and, and don't really get looked at much after they're developed, and Livonia is making a concerted effort to, uh, to keep that as a living document and an updated document. And I think that's, uh, that's excellent that we're doing that, uh, because I think that'll serve us better as we go forward, so, um, I just wanted to make those comments. Uh, if there's any other comments from any of our commissioners? If not, uh, there's really no action to be taken on this item. It's more just an introduction for us to understand, uh, this project as it kicks off, and we appreciate you coming and spending the night with us, Mr. Smith, uh, to, uh, to talk, to talk about it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, and I look forward to seeing you, uh, early 2025.
Sounds great. Thanks again for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that takes care of item number six on the agenda. We do have, uh, item number seven, Mr. Secretary.
It's our, it's our approval of the 2025 planning schedule.
So this is our schedule for our meetings next year. There's a couple different, uh, schedules that are, were proposed to us in our, uh, packet. Uh, slightly different, uh, uh, dates that allow for a little bit more, uh, uh, weeks off, I believe, to kind of accommodate, uh, what we've seen over the last few years in terms of our flow of meetings. Uh, basically, anyone who's watched planning commission meetings for a long time knows that more or less every Tuesday, there's either a study or, or a regular meeting throughout the year, scheduled with exceptions for various holidays and, and special weeks. But, uh, uh, we're trying to, uh, spread these out a little bit more, because we, we find these opportunities where things slow down a little bit, and we don't really, uh, need to have meetings, and we end up skipping meetings. Uh, so, uh, an alternative schedule was, was proposed. If there's someone wishing to, uh, uh, opine on which one they prefer, I think we had a, a bit of a discussion at that, at our study meeting.
I think option one.
You, you like the, uh, you like the newer option, huh? And everyone else is feeling pretty good about that schedule?
I agree. I think, I like the first option.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Yuhasi, do we need to formally approve this as a motion, or is it just sort of a, a receive and file?
So, the only comment I would have, uh, on, uh,
Of course.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
Thank you. Um, so on the traditional schedule, we show June 24th as no meeting because it's spree week. And on the new week-off schedule, we have a study meeting on June 24th. So I would, I'm, I'm much in favor of the new schedule, but, uh, do we want to consider moving that June 24th meeting up a week to June 17th?
I had adjusted it accordingly, so I don't know. Maybe this happened.
We got an old one in here? Perfect.
I did adjust it to the 17th.
Good. And, and I'm sure Mr. Kira Magna will.
I, I would, I wouldn't be there, so, thank you. Good looking out.
Great, all right.
I'm always glad that spree is the forefront of our planning, uh, schedules.
It's just hard to get around anywhere, you know, you said to you about that.
Oh, definitely.
Going on, so.
Okay, good. Well, if there's, if there's no objection or, or comments from any of the other commissioners, Mr. Ventura?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
So are we anticipating that we'll have less agenda items in '25 than we have this year?
Uh, Mr. Yuhasi, do you want to, uh, give any insight on that?
I think it's just more of a way that we've, we've noticed that, like, compared to what, before I got here, there was a lot more agenda items per meeting, and with the reduction, we've had to, you know, skip several meetings. Um, so Mark was just thinking this might be more streamlined approach, as opposed to setting up the meetings and then canceling them. This way, we would be able to hold them for not that much more time, uh, but it would, it would still also, also give us less requirements.
So you don't, you don't anticipate that fewer meetings are going to result in longer meetings?
No, I, I think like this meeting will be the exception, where it's a, oh, many agenda items. Um, I think it'll be closer to what we've had, where there's like three, give or take. Um, this really only reduces like, I think, four or five meetings throughout the, the entire year. Um, so it's, it's kind of a, the original, uh, 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 proposed by Mark was to do like half the number of meetings, uh, but we figured that would be probably a little too much of a jump, so this was our way of easing in to see if it's, if it's worth, you know, uh, reducing the number of meetings, going back to where we were, um, kind of dipping our toe in. But I don't, I don't see it being resulting in many more meetings like this than.
Your concern is less meetings, but we're going to be.
Less meetings, longer meetings, yeah.
Five hours at a time.
Right, yeah.
No, I, I think at the pace that we've seen over the last couple of years, that it will not be required.
And there's nothing that would preclude our adjusting in the middle of the year? If we find that our activity is up and we are, end up with a lot of longer meetings?
I believe so. Like, uh, I mean, if we, just like it'd be the opposite of us canceling, adding them in there. Uh, it's more of an internal process anyway, uh, other than the publishing dates.
Yeah, you'd have to have enough time to hold a public here, a public meeting, but that's forty, forty-eight hours notice, so, yeah. But that, we would should have plenty of time to notice, so.
But if it was something that we could, we could revisit, you know, if we noticed in the first half of the year, there was already, uh, the meetings were going longer. It's definitely something we could revisit.
All right. Thank you.
That's an excellent question.
Chairman.
Certainly, and, and certainly, we always had the opportunity to, uh, continue to cancel meetings if there's no, uh, uh, items on, on our agendas. Uh, and, you know, adjust as we go. So the, as Mr. Yuhasi pointed out, we're just sort of easing our way into maybe a slightly more relaxed schedule than we've had in the past, and see how it goes. This is, this meeting is certainly an exception for its length, and, uh, uh, but that's because our, our past meeting that we had, our, our last, uh, uh, regular meeting was just one item, because there was some anticipation of, uh, of it being a, a intense item, so.
And the, the grant had a kind of a timeframe that we wanted to get, make sure we, we didn't want to hold it off too much longer.
Right. Okay. All right, if there's, and no other discussion on this, then I think we'll receive and file the new amended, uh, schedule with the accommodation for spree week to be moved.
Thank you.
With that, we'll mark this as receive and file. And, uh, there's one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
That is the approval of the 1,221st public hearing, a regular meeting held by the planning commission on October 22nd, 2024.
All members were present except Mr. Ventura and Mr. Bonjero. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Denaro and Mr. Long. If there's no objection, we'll show five to approve that, uh, item.
Tell me again who was not here.
Uh, Mr. Ventura and Mr. Bonjero were not here. Ventura, Bonjero, the rest of us were. So we got Denaro and Long on the approving, and I see no objection for five on that. So that takes us to the end of our agenda. Any other business that come before the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
Do have a quick question. Um,
Certainly.
On, on their way out the door, Zach's asked about the next council meeting, and, uh, I don't know if their petition is time-sensitive. Does it make sense to offer a waiver of reconsideration in order to make sure that they don't hit any delays?
Doesn't really work that well anymore. Uh, the way that the schedule for the council, I just tried to get it onto the next one.
So.
Waiver doesn't really.
Because.
Doesn't work the way that it used to work.
Okay, because there's a study session for council on, on this coming week. It will go on to the agenda for the study session, and then it'll go on to their next formal at the meeting after that.
I want to say we're into the first one of December at this point, so he is probably right, but I don't know the dates.
So there's a meeting coming up next week, Monday.
It won't make that.
It wa- but it won't make their formal agenda, but will it make their study agenda for that? No, it doesn't make it at all. So they'll be studied on December 2nd.
Yeah.
And, and if we offered a waiver, it wouldn't matter. It wouldn't accelerate them onto the study session. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that discussion, Mr. Long. It's been a long time since we've done one of those, to be honest. Bringing back, uh, old memories. All right, uh, if there's no other discussion, uh, no other business to come before the commission, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Denaro, supported by Mr. Bonjero. If there's no objection, we can show seven. I see no objection. This meeting has been adjourned. Uh, I would like to thank the Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and I will be adjourning this meeting, uh, tonight at, uh, whatever time it is, 9:22 PM. And good night, Livonia.